Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Education. It's Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. It is 5:00 PM. Let the record show that all board members are present except for Mr. Carons, who is joining us online on the phone. Before each of us, we have an agenda to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Jeff and Jared, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. So just to reiterate, so I called this meeting to kind of go over some of our reentry plans and maybe make some adjustments to it. I know we put some procedures in place back before school started that would allow for some safety measures put in place in the event that we fell below 90% attendance rate. It looks like we hit that rate a lot quicker than we initially anticipated. So rather than waiting until the regular board meeting, which comes up at the end of this month, I thought it was more prudent to kind of get together and discuss it a little further and see if any changes need to be made. And before we get into that, we had one request from an individual to address the board before our discussion. I believe Christopher Snyder is in the audience this evening. And just to go, you can approach. Just to give you, I didn't know if they shared the information with you, so you have three minutes.
Cheers.
And may begin.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Snyder. My wife Lauren and I are here representing our children. We have two little boys. M1 is 12 years old, is vaccinated at the junior high. M2 is nine years old, obviously cannot be vaccinated. He's at Clifford. I've been at home with him today doing quarantine teaching, which is fun on a Chromebook. So I would start by saying, and I've said all of this to all of you at this point, I could not have been more proud of Cape Schools last year. 2021 season was amazing. In the middle of a pandemic, we had no schools shut down, not all of our schools shut down for one day. We have professed by people within our administration that we had kids that are chronically ill that didn't miss a day, that we have multiple teachers in the elementary schools that had 100% attendance in their classroom all year long. Those numbers are our district in our town with the failed states that were in place last year, and they worked. So we had a great school season. This year, we have not, and I would say all of this was forecastable, but we're past that. So I appreciate the meeting tonight. Thank you for making this available. I would like to obviously see masks go into place. I'm wearing one. I wear one when I'm in the public primarily, although I've been called out on Facebook. Evidently, I have not 100% of the time. I will do better. Most importantly, I would like to see our kids stay in school, as every one of you would. I don't doubt that otherwise. We know what works in our district. We don't know what works outside of our district, but we know what works here because it worked last year. So we would kindly suggest that we go back to a mask mandate.
With a minute to spare.
Thank you. That's rare.
Can you do me a favor and make sure those mics are just a little bit closer to you maybe? There you go. Just keep, we have one off like more.
So again, we always appreciate audience participation and comments, especially at our regular board meetings. That's how we know what our constituents who elected us to these positions, what they're feeling and what they would like to see within our school district, and it allows us to make better, more informed decisions. So we appreciate that. Now we will get into our next item, which is our discussion of our reentry plan where the board can kind of discuss and ask questions of Dr. Glass and maybe get a little more data. I believe Mr. Russell is here with some data to share with us. So I will turn it over to Dr. Glass.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Just to kind of recap a little bit, our last conversation over the reentry plan, basically we established a layered mitigation approach. Basically, we would try to minimize our cohorts and teach hand washing and do some of the social distancing that is recommended by the CDC, also mandated masking on the buses. But then we also put in a kind of a trigger point. If our enrollment fell below 90% in average daily attendance, it would trigger a mask mandate as well. Well, last Friday, we hit that in two of our buildings. And as we looked out and forecasted, we could tell that we were going to sustain that, if not grow worse throughout the course of this week and for the foreseeable future, for that matter. That's when I approached Mr. McDonald, the president, and said, hey, I think we probably need to discuss this. I know that we said under 90% for five consecutive days. However, it is 100% for sure that we will maintain below that threshold for the foreseeable future and meaning this week. And I said, I think it's prudent that we institute the mandated masking sooner than later to, if we can, prevent, you know, possibly a couple hundred students before becoming infected or exposed, I should say, not infected, but exposed at least. And that's really what's been hurting us is the close contacts, the quarantining with close contacts, the positives. Although we have a number, a fair number of those, they're not significant, in my opinion. But the close contacts have been significant because according to the CDC protocols, a close contact is any individual that's not masked. Even if one individual is masked, it's still considered a close contact. And that's kind of, and you know, we try to follow the letter of the law on that, the CDC guideline. And in so doing, we've got over 300 kids right now, 309, I think, as of 5:00, that have been quarantined, either testing positive or being tested or just quarantined because of close contact. That's significant in our book. It's made it hard on our faculty and staff. It's been extremely hard on central office, having to contact trace and informing those parents that their son or daughter has been quarantined. And it's just been a hardship all around. And our goal and our mission is to keep kids in school, to educate the kids to the best of our ability. And it's had a negative impact so far from the beginning of school to complete that mission. And so I want to revisit that today. I would like my recommendation, and I would like to move forward with the mask mandate sooner than later instead of waiting the two additional days until basically Thursday would, according to our protocols that we talked about, and go ahead and institute that tomorrow, which I think will preserve a couple hundred close contacts. So that's kind of what I'm throwing out there to the board, just to get some feedback on that. I think I've heard from faculty and staff and even students wanting to preserve their sports seasons and wanting to preserve some of the clubs that they're in. They want to be in school, and I want them in school, and so does our faculty and staff.
So last Friday, we dipped below 90%. Based on the procedure that is in place right now, if we stayed below 90% through, what, Thursday of this week, I guess, then Friday of this week, the mandatory mask mandate would take place under our current procedure, and we're looking at doing that two days early.
Two days early. Yes, sir.
I'll just share that I wholeheartedly supported the procedure that we had in place, that we currently have in place, five days below 90%. And I don't want anyone to misunderstand my position on this. I'm not against masks at all. And if we reach that threshold of five consecutive days under 90%, I would absolutely 100% support a mask mandate in Cape public schools. So please don't misunderstand my statements. It's not that I'm against masks. What I enjoy, what I appreciated is a better word, about the procedure that we have in place now is that we were relying on hard data from our district to help guide that decision-making process. And when we start forecasting, I would prefer to rely on hard data that has been accumulated as opposed to forecasting what's going to happen over the next couple of days. And I can appreciate that we can pretty accurately do that. But for me, it's basing the decision on data that is specific to the district that has occurred in the district is why I was very supportive of the current procedure, which would essentially require us, it sounds like it would have eventually required us to mask up on Friday of this week. That's kind of where I'm at.
So while you having said that, I think where we kind of fell short in looking at our procedure was that once we hit that 90% rate, the students were going to be quarantined for 10 days. So for 10 days from that 90% fall below, there was no chance of us getting back above it.
Sure.
So it's not so much a forecast of what's to come, it's more of looking at the data at that point.
Sure.
And realizing that we don't have an influx of students that is going to offset the students that are taken out of the class.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. You said we have 300 students right now quarantined?
309 is the last number I saw.
What's our total student population?
What is it, Jamie, 4,300?
Why don't you pull up those reports?
Right now, as of, as of today, it's 4475.
So 309, can you do some quick math for me? 309, what percentage of our students is that? Should be less than 10.
About seven.
It's about, yeah, about 7%.
But the majority of those are at a couple of buildings.
Sure, sure.
So that's why.
So it dips below in those buildings.
At those buildings.
I understand, I understand. And so that's, I am, I have stated my position. I'm not going to argue the point. I wholeheartedly support the procedure we have in place right now. What changes the administration makes beyond that, I don't know. I just, I like the decision we made a week ago. And, but I'm not, again, I'm not going to argue the point if the board wants to, or if, and I should make this clear, this is not a board policy. This is a administrative procedure. And so the board actually doesn't even vote on this. And so, you know, if the board, other board members want to support that, I am perfectly fine with that. I don't have a problem in the world with that. And I want administration to know how much I appreciate the work that you're doing and how difficult that job is right now.
And I always like, when we're making big decisions like that, I always like to do a temperature check with the board. And that's why, you know, we called the meeting is to make sure I understood where you guys were coming from, that way I can respond accordingly. You represent the constituent.
And part of that procedure is also to review it at every board meeting, so that doesn't stop us from doing so.
That's correct.
With, you know, whatever decision we make, and especially with, you know, following CDC's guidelines as far as if you're in a mask, if you're not in a mask, and who has to quarantine, that's, you know, that's difficult if everyone's not masked. And like we all have said and talked about is, you know, number one, we want to keep our students safe, and number two, we want to keep them in school. You know, I think our students are better off in school, and we have to, you know, we have to do that.
I think I'd follow up on Kyle's angle, that the procedure is satisfied in that we do know that these kids are going to be quarantined. So the numbers, the denominator is going to hold, the numerator is going to hold, so we're going to be there. So still upholding from a procedural standpoint, from a defensible go-forward standpoint, that we're not willy-nilly, you know, swaying in the wind and deciding, oh, today we're masked, no, we're not. No, we have a procedure in place that is providing guidance to the administration, to the school, to the public, says this is how we're going about business. So there is focus that, I feel the same way that it does comply with it. I think, yeah, instead of us being retroactive, we probably should have stepped back and said, hey, this is out. I mean, I've got, two kids are out on quarantine also right now, so, and I know they're not going to get to go back, so they do count in that number going forward. So I would say, and again, that's the biggest thing, is I want to make sure that we've got procedures in place that don't make us just, you know, again, subject to the winds of change, which are constantly dynamic in this world right now. So we've got the procedure, and I don't think we're violating the heart of that, or you would be violating the heart of that by making that mandate sooner, two days sooner than later.
It's not an arbitrary decision. It's based on data.
Yeah, no, I was talking about, and having a procedure in place, that way we're not just saying, hey, it's kind of, we've got a procedure, we're following the procedure.
Yep.
And the other thing to think of is, we're in our first week of school, and administrators and staff have other important things to be doing with their time rather than sitting on the phone trying to make contact with families to let them know that their child was exposed through contact tracing and that, you know, they're going to have to be quarantined. So, I mean, if you're looking at 100 students a day, that consumes a lot of time, that they could be doing other things. So if we make these changes, then it'll free up our administrators and our staff to actually do what they were hired to do, and that's initially our children. So I don't think by putting it in place two days early, it would.
And I will say this, our parents have been great to work with. They've been very understanding for the most part when I talk to my staff, who have done the calls out to the parents of those students that have been quarantined. They've been very understanding, great to work with, very appreciative, asking questions on how do they get, how do they go through, how do they get their homework, which is something we've been working with the teachers on. So things have been working as far as that's concerned.
Hey Kyle, quick comment from Idaho if I may.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I support Dr. Glass and what he's said in terms of moving more quickly on reinstating a mask mandate. You know, we continue to be in truly unprecedented times, and I think, as Mr. Cook said, you know, it's sometimes hard to predict the future. But based on the math problem we're looking at right now in terms of quarantined students and staff and the time spent, like you mentioned, Kyle, I am fully in favor of moving to this effective tomorrow in the name of trying to stop the exodus of kids from the building and education. I truly support the efforts of all staff and administration, and the understanding of parents recognizing at some level, we're all trying to figure out how to navigate this thing together and do our kids' things and meet our obligations in the roles we're in. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Paul.
So Dr. Glass, what's your recommendation going forward?
So my recommendation, and we worked on this today, is that we send out the communication this evening in order to try to get that out and say the mask mandate will be in effect tomorrow. And obviously, we know that it's kind of going to be a soft opening, if you will, and try to push that out. But hopefully, we build up for, you know, Thursday's a few more, and then Friday, you know, and certainly by Monday, we're at full force.
So do we have a supply of masks on hand for each building in the event that students arrive at school and don't have one that we can supply to them?
Yeah, Mr. Crowell's been in charge of that. I'll let him answer that.
We have just under 90,000 disposable masks. 90,000 disposable masks in stockpile right now, anticipating masks. So we're ready to get those deployed out to the buildings. We've already got them on all the buses. We've already got stockpiles. And we also have another shipment coming in on Friday that we'll pick up from Jeff City that are cloth masks that are coming in, similar to what we had last year that was given to us from the States. So we're ready.
Okay. So we have plenty if somebody shows up at school. All right. So anyone else on the board have any questions, comments? I guess I would just like to get everyone's agreement if they're okay with that.
I support it as well. I mean, if we could predict any other incident in the future, we would do whatever we could right now to prevent it, and I think that's what we're doing right now. We're not going to wait until two more days. I don't see the reason to wait.
I support it as well. Communicating out, the email, text message, all of that, is that how we're going to communicate that out?
Oh, defer to Ms. Talon, our communications director.
We will, and we also had it translated into Spanish. And this brother from the bird who's so fat realized has recorded it, so that way our families that maybe need it in that format will also receive it. And we'll continue to push the message as high as we want to make sure that nobody can say anything enough, even though someone's still.
How difficult, you know, like you do the schools outs phone calls?
Mm-hmm, the robocalls.
Would that be included in this as well, like a phone call rollout to people? Okay.
So just like a snow day?
Yeah.
Without the video.
I do have one more question. With the new state law that was passed, at some point, will the board need to vote on that procedure?
You're going to have to bring me up to speed for a second.
With the state law that was passed that said you could institute, that public officials could institute mask mandates, but at some point, they had to be approved by the governing body of that governmental entity, whether it's the county or whomever, how does that apply here?
From, you know, I'm not getting any guidance from Desi on that, that says that that's a, something that's mandated on school districts. So I'm more than willing to bring our reentry plan back. It does say that it needs to be reviewed at least a minimum of six-month basis, so we can bring the reentry plan back, we can discuss it, we can vote on it as far as.
I just, and again, I just want to make sure that we're complying.
Absolutely.
That new law that was passed, and I don't personally know how it applies to school districts. But I just want to make sure that if it does, that we're.
Sure, absolutely.
That's what we should be doing.
One other comment from Idaho if I may. I would just encourage, I couldn't hear when Ms. Talon was speaking, but if there's a way, Mr. Brow, 50,000 mask stockpile, I was thinking is what he said, if there's a way to put in the communication that for those students who show up to schools without a mask, we're going to be providing to them, and the expectation that students will be masked in any building, I think that would be a positive step just to set that expectation with folks. And, but obviously leave it up to the administration to carry that out in accordance with your judgment.
Thank you.
So if we put this in place, when will it be reviewed to see if it is reversed in the future, you know, after things calm down?
Every board meeting, we've said in our procedure that we would review it. So I'll bring you the data. Jamie's running the data. We've got real-time data. We can have the most accurate, up-to-date data during the board meeting. We'll just have that as an agenda item for the foreseeable future until we don't have to have it anymore.
So speaking of the data, so we have 309 quarantined students, but as of Friday, you sent out the email update on Friday that said there were 38 school-aged students, school-aged children in the county, based on the data from the.
And that's positive cases from, and that's county health department data. That was not generated by our school system.
So that was 38 school-aged children that tested positively. Do we have a number within our school district of active cases? Obviously, we don't have 309 active cases. So I just want to make sure that's.
No, it's well below that.
Yeah.
So right now.
Wasn't it 27, I think, was the last number I saw?
Yes, this is. That update has been involved tonight.
Because I think that was a problem on Friday, was that when you went to the website and you clicked on the COVID case link, that it went to the public Tableau or Tableau Public or whatever. And then either that site was down because it wasn't updating the information in there, so that information wasn't available for individuals that were looking for it. So I think that was an initial concern.
Okay. No, it's back up, it's ready to go. There now, there, right now, active positive students, and that means that they're at home right now. And what we mentioned was 28.
28.
28, okay.
So 28 out of the 309 quarantined are active.
Oh, sorry, 306.
306.
We had the question data.
Which, and this is not anything that we can control, but that means that we have, what, 280 students who are at home right now who are healthy students?
Currently.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially.
They could be symptomatic, they could be quarantined because, for a variety of reasons.
But they could potentially be fine.
Yes.
Yeah. But the issue is that for every student that tests positive for it, there's a 10%, you know, there's 10 students around them that have been in contact with them that are then quarantined and out of schools.
You're basically doubling them.
Right.
You're doubling them from last year.
Right now, it's about 20, it's 20 to 30 students because of the mask. They're being impacted by every positive case.
Because they.
Sometimes then you're ending up with more positive cases out of that one student.
You can divide the 28 into 28.
So you're saying that the number from last year was half of that?
Why was it half because they were masked?
So if you're, it was only during lunchtime, and so during lunchtime, that comes down, and it's just the five or six.
I see. Okay, so it's the time.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
It's 15 minutes over a 24-hour span.
And if, and if I'm correct, if both are masked, you do not have to quarantine, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Even if one's masked, one's not.
So it would really, with a mask mandate, it would really limit us to those lunch periods where we would, okay.
Because they're in their cohorts already.
Right.
When it changes.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, so it sounds like the board is pretty well agreed on the changes that you've recommended, and we will review it again at our next board meeting.
I really appreciate y'all meeting tonight on such short notice, but I thought it was imperative that we get this step.
If everyone is good with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Jeff and Jared, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate you coming out this evening.